It's just so odd, not just seeing something, somebody different.
Soon, soon there'll be one person here. I hope. I know. We're keeping you on your toes.
What we gonna do?
It's his fault.
It all is.
Yeah.
I mean, that's where the buck starts.
Well, at least you know the drill.
That's right.
You see my 4-4-3 manner?
I'm gonna let you know you borrowed your little lap.
Oh, good. Good, good, good.
It should be ready for the 20 second.
Okay. I didn't know whether Dana forgot or not.
I don't know if she forgot, but we had notes. We've gone through all our notes now and find.
Okay, good.
So I saw what John in IT and on it.
Would you draw up the vending machine?
Yeah, back there.
Maybe I'll get a nap. We're not gonna let you have a break.
Getting coffee?
Had it, mounted it right there.
I got this to work.
Great mayor. He's seven years old. Seven years.
Seven, oh, that's their turn.
Just finished his first year. Got the same problems there. Decaying buildings. He's got the problem with rain running. Young kids leaving, going to the big city. Very interesting guy to talk to. I got their Thursday. Had the marriage from Kleeney. Little German city, way up in the north. So I had a chance to talk to them. The guy from Kleeney, he was very difficult to talk to. He was speaking German and speaking English. So we sign language a little bit.
What generation are you?
I know. Everybody gave a open speech. Put anything in writing. This being come to order, today is Tuesday, Thursday, June 15, 2017. This is the council budget workshop. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ober.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lamberson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Chiska.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
Okay, we'll have Councilman Lizelle lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to the budgets.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a very exciting day. Mark Woodfell, Finance Director, exciting day of budget meetings today. Obviously, we're continuing our Part II budget workshop on several things, answering some questions that came up. Later on your agendas, we have the tentative budget. And again, just to remind Council as we go through the, just because the tentative budget is on a later council meeting, doesn't mean there can't be changes from tentative budget to final budget. T tentative budget sets the cap. And we've included, as we'll talk about, certain things in the tentative budget. It sets the cap, it sets the hearing date for the budget. And at that point, if Council wants to reduce the budget in one way or another, or shift things from one place in the budget to another, that can all be done at the later meeting. So just because we have the tentative budget on a later agenda, doesn't mean that nothing that we're talking about today can't be changed. It's just part of the process and should allow Council the opportunity to make whatever changes they want to make in the budget as we move forward. So with that, we'll get into it. Just a reminder, there are all the budget process today. Quite a few public meetings have led us here today to the second part of the budget. We're gonna split our presentation today in two parts. Part one, we're gonna kind of follow up on a few items. We're gonna talk about some issues with PSPRS that have to be talked about if Council wants to do something on them today. And then we're gonna look at a revised tentative budget. And then Part II will be a continuation of the discussion on the Public Works Capital Plan. So to follow up on a few things that have been brought up through the Part I workshop and the Part II, the $40,000 for G-Prep has been removed from the budget for 2018. There was a lot of concern voiced by Council. Staff heard your concern, relayed just some reclasses that were in the budget for Community Development and Fire Department. Talking with those departments, we came up with different solutions, and they've withdrawn those reclassifications, and they've been removed from the budget as we move forward. And then a question came up on a bulletproof vest grant. The mayor was wondering to know where that money's came from on that bulletproof vest, and it was the Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnering Program. So to get into that, we've also included in your packets the revised org chart for those two departments that had reorganizations. As you can see, Community Development, org chart there with the Planning and Zoning Division, the Building Safety Division, and Code Compliance Division.
Mark, does that mean that we're actually gonna hire a second full-time code compliance officer?
No. This is the code compliance officer we have.
It says two FTE.
There is a Code Enforcement Officer and a Secretary in Code Enforcement. So that's the two FTEs. You can see on the org chart, those two positions.
Okay. We've talked about hiring more. Maybe I'm the only one who brings it up, but I think we need more FTEs.
Right. And as we discussed in whichever workshop that was, Council can, throughout the year, you know, we're collecting data in Code Enforcement, number of complaints, response times, those type of things, as we go. Council doesn't have to wait until the next budget process to add a position. Council can take action at any meeting during the year to move budget appropriation and add a position to Code Enforcement, you know, once we have additional data on actual needs in that area. Again, we're going to more of a performance-based budgeting, and we're looking at the data as far as call volume, call response time, that sort of stuff. So that Council, when you want to add a position, can do that with information.
I would just say, Councilwoman Wilcox, that doesn't preclude you right now, if we're seeing if there's more interest from the rest of Council about having that. And we could include that in the budget, but that would be a discussion you guys could have and decide, or at least talk about.
Well, I would like to discuss it. There, you know, there are two major things that happened in the last year. One was the licensing of the recovery homes.
Business license.
Business license.
And vacation rentals.
And vacation rentals, yeah. That puts a higher burden on our code compliance officer. And even with the change in the process for taking in complaints, I think we're still not keeping up with the complaints that we do get. And we'll get more, and especially when we, next year, on January 1st, when we have to start enforcing the business license requirement, that's going to fall somewhere in the compliance area. I would like to see another FTE.
I don't disagree with you, Gene, I think, but I'd like to have that discussion with Mike here, where we can find out where he is needing help, if any, and where that is, and what that position would look like.
Yeah, Gene, I'd like to kind of chime in here. My bottom line is, what are we getting for this extra FTE? And, you know, is it, is it something that is gonna be a return on investment? And so, you know, I'd like to explore it from that standpoint.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I think it's a case of priorities. And maybe we have too many inspectors. Maybe we need code enforcement officers, and we can get rid of a couple of engineers. How many engineers do you really need watching what took place on Alarkin, and what a catastrophic mess that's been? You know, getting kind of tired of this. Maybe we got too many engineers, and we don't have enough code enforcement. So that's where I'm at.
Well, and City Manager, I believe, you've, you're trying to set up a different method in trying to get other folks to support code enforcement.
Yeah, we are. I mean, you know, we went to the 24-hour hot line, we added a secretary, because a lot of Mike's day-to-day time was being dedicated to administrative support functions. One thing we could do is, if there's a desire to have Mike present either today or at a future workshop, to talk about what his workload is, and you guys can make a determination at that time if you think it warrants another body.
And if I can just point out, the way, when we adjusted our code, our city code to for sort of stronger code enforcement, it also gives the manager authority to, for lack of a better term, deputize other city employees to do code enforcement work. And those are, those are more, the thought of that was more in the sort of subject matter expert areas. So if there are, for instance, drainage or erosion, code violations, in the past, what happens is, is, you know, one of the project managers or inspectors goes out, sees it, can't get compliance from somebody doing work on the property, creating erosion issues or whatever, and then have to call the code enforcement to, you know, if there's a need for that kind of enforcement. So the thought is, is that if those sort of subject matter experts have the authority delegated to them to do code enforcement, they can actually issue notices of violation and citations and those kinds of things. The rub on all that is, that does take, I mean, that is an extra duty for someone, and it does take training, because when civil citations are issued by a government, if it's litigated and the other side has an attorney and is successful in defending, we could be stuck with attorney, you know, paying the other side's attorney's fees. So we sort of are cautious when we go down that lane, but that's a sort of a third option, I guess, whether we need, I don't have an opinion whether we need more, you know, personnel in code, specifically dedicated to code enforcement, but there is that sort of third option to, on certain circumstances, to be able to authorize other employees to actually do code enforcement and citation-type work. And again, most, most of code enforcement is to get compliance and it's not to issue citation. And I think, and I will just say this, my experience with Mike is he does a great job getting compliance. We get very few citations through our office, and I think that's because Mike, in particular, you know, does a great job getting the violator to actually come in compliance, because a lot of times, it's just an education issue. People don't know that their garbage can can't be out more than 24 hours, or, you know, before and after pickup. Some people just don't know that. And I'll tell you, that's, seems to be one of the biggest complaints, is the garbage can issue. There you go. I'm done for the day.
Councilman Blair.
Thank you, Mayor. From my standpoint, I can't support that position until we see something from the Police Department and from code enforcement, from the Attorney's Office, to show how many actual complaints we have, and whether Mike is actually overburdened. We can talk about all the things that are out there. Whether we're going to be proactive in code enforcement or reactive is the other story. We can be proactive and hire seven guys and have a bunch of people running around with receipt books writing violations. Or we can respond to, you know, the folks that call in about whether there are flags in the right-of-way on Willow Creek Road, or whatever the case may be. And I think when Mike gets those reports, he addresses them fairly well. But yet, I haven't seen a list of those reports. I have not seen anything from the Fire Department, from call volumes to sober living homes, what those look like. I haven't seen any of that to make the determination that we need another body. And until I do, I can't support it.
Councilwoman Orr.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I would agree with Steve and John Palladini. I appreciate your comment about that this is really more of an education and, rather than the enforcement side. We're pretty strapped citywide right now, staff-wise. And so I would, I would like first to hold off until we have more data.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Well, I'd like to see the data, too. But I think we have the responsibility to make a policy decision about code enforcement. Steve said, are we going to be reactive or proactive? I've heard many complaints from people about how there is a lack of code enforcement because we are just reactive. And there's just a general, oh, well, my complaint isn't going to go anywhere attitude, because we don't see changes happening. So I personally would like to see a more proactive policy, so that we can get ahead of some of these major violations. I'm not talking about having the code enforcement Nazis go out. But there are some serious problems that we need to address in the community. And it started, it really came to our attention with the recovery.
What are those serious problems? I don't have a list of them. I'd like to know what they are.
You know, all I have are anecdotes, but I would like to see the data.
Yeah.
Well, we certainly could provide you information about call volume, the nature of the calls, and we could probably have that, most definitely, for the next time they get together to talk about this.
Yeah.
And I agree. I would like to know what those are, so that we could, in fact, see if, what's the best way to tackle that? Because maybe it is letting your local councilman know he can't leave a trash can out.
I don't. I just said there was a rule.
But my point is, if it's education, that's not necessarily an enforcement officer. That is something that we can do as a city, communication-wise, maybe with John Heiney or some other way.
Sure, we can get the word out in some other way.
So I think it's important that we have that data, know what those issues are. I mean, I get my share of, why do you guys allow that, and that type of thing, so.
I think that's smart. It's a database decision, and we'll get you the information. And it'd be good to have Mike present, too, because you could ask him questions specifically about what he's dealing with.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Here again, I'll go back to my pontification here a little early. How many engineers you got working for you?
Henry, how many engineers do we have in total? Is it?
I know how many there is. I want to hear him say it. I want to hear it on the record. Thank you. How many code enforcement officers do we have?
Well, we have one officer.
Oh, gosh, guys, here again. It's a matter of priorities. There's things that you can farm out to the private sector, and there's things that you cannot. There's things that this community's culpable for, and there's things, you have a legitimate reason to farm it out to the private sector. Engineering might be one of them. So how many engineers do you really need, and how many code enforcement officers or compliance officers, or whatever you want to label it, do you need?
Okay, I think I have a consensus from the Council that we need further information. Let's move on to the next item.
Page six of your slide deck has the revised Fire Department taking out the reclass that you saw in the last meeting. Again, no other changes, just moving back to the three bureaus or divisions of Fire Department.
Mayor, if I could, if you go back on that, Mark. Is this the one that shows the brush crew being transferred over?
The fuels reduction is under community risk reduction, and those are the permanent positions. The temporary positions are the ones that moved over to recreation.
And when we say temporary, are these people?
They're seasonal. Seasonal.
Joe's taking on the guys that actually do the mitigation, in terms of cuttings and what have you. The managers of those guys are still in the Fire Department, because the grant has to be processed through Fire.
Yeah, and I wanted to talk about this further. I don't get that. If they're seasonal, they're not here, when they're here and then they're not here. But when they're here, they're managed by the Fire Department, right?
Yes.
So then why would we take that, and it just seems like we're, it's a shell game. I don't understand.
There seemed to be some council interest by individual council members, and they could speak to this, about having a clear delineation that the people that were physically doing the labor were not firefighters, in case there was any issue down the road about PSPRS or what have you. And one way to create that is to put them in the Parks and Rec Department. We already have people doing right-of-way cleanup and the like. So there's similar services in the Parks and Rec Department that made transitioning these temporary employees to them possible.
Then why don't we just clear out all the fire and police people that are on PSPRS and put them in other departments? I'm just wondering. I mean, there's, there's.
That's a good wonder. I wonder the same. If Don Devendorf is ultimately the guy that signs up off on Fire Wise, why are we moving the very people that he makes a determination on? Why are we moving them to Parks and Recreation? Joe's got enough to do. I'm not gonna say what his workload is, but my God, we keep dumping stuff in his lap. And if we go to these, if we go to these communities out there, Timber Ridge or whatever community it may be, to Fire Wise those with a Parks and Recreation crew, it doesn't make sense. If it's a fire crew supervised and authorized by a building permit and everything else, certified by the Fire Department, then my God, leave them where they're at.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Mr. Palladini, help clarify for me again. If they're qualified firefighters and they work for the Fire Department, they go into PSPRS by law.
Well, that's correct.
And if they're not qualified firefighters and they work for Parks and Recreation, they do not go into PSPRS.
That's correct.
Thank you.
However, the PSPRS statute talks about performing duties typical of a firefighter. So it's not a, necessarily a bright line. It is a gradient of gray that goes from, if it's landscaping and parks maintenance and you're using chainsaws and pickaxes, it's probably not typical of a fire, you know, duties of a firefighter. If you use those same tools and you're cutting brush lines to prevent, you know, a fire line, you know, it moves more towards a duty typical of a firefighter, based on our recent, relatively recent experience over the last couple of years. So, you know, the, there are also others, remember, there are also other issues for PSPRS eligibility. You have to work so many weeks per year. You have to work basically full-time. So a lot of it, you know, and you have to be a city employee. And so, you know, if, for instance, these crews are contractor, you know, provided, and the budget, the budget funds come out of, of Fire Department or Parks and Rec, they're not even city employees, and therefore, they're not, there is no PSPRS question at all. So there are a lot of factors that go into that issue.
So just privatize it. Instead of having the argument, why don't we just say contracted?
There are options to hire private contractors to do this work that can be supervised by fuels management, those three fuels management people. That is an option for the Council. It's, you know, the budget allow, the budget, the appropriation is a certain dollar amount that could be used for either employees or, you know, hiring contractors. The other issue you have to remember is, starting July 1, all of those temporary employees are likely to, or they're not likely, they are entitled to sick pay under the new initiative that goes into effect. So there's, you know, temporary employees now get some level of benefits from the city that they never gave before. So those are factors I think you need to consider going through. And, you know, and God forbid, we have another accident on a fuels, you know, fuels, a person clearing brush, whether it's a death or dismemberment, you know, who knows what the argument's going to be about whether that person was entitled or should be entitled to PSPRS eligibility retroactive. We don't know, you know, whether that argument is gonna come up. So there are, there are safer, there are ways to go that kind of draw that, or, you know, build that wall.
Wouldn't that argument go away if they were working for somebody else besides the city? If you're contracting that, that job out.
The one additional point that I would raise is, these are not firefighters. They don't go out and put wet stuff on red stuff. They clear brush, that's their job. They're not fully certified firefighters. They're seasonal help, clearing brush.
I heard that. Under the supervision of the Fire Department. And I heard that loud and clear. But the point there is still being, is if there's, is there some sort of a conflict or some sort of a liability issue because they're clearing brush on behalf of the city, then why don't we just contract the job out and put that on the burden of whoever the company is?
Councilwoman Orr.
Michael, the fuels management coordinator and the reduction technician, all three of those are in PSPRS?
Yes.
So everyone on this chart? Except for the clerical.
The technicians are, aren't they the overseers of the?
I don't believe any of the three are in PSPRS.
I thought the two managers were, but I'm, maybe I'm wrong. We can check. Dennis isn't in the audience.
HR Director is shaking her head no.
They're not, okay. So we've already got, exactly.
Yes. Again, it's, I hate to use this, but it's complex, it's complicated. It's, you know, if you're, you can be a non-firefighter, a non-PSPRS firefighter, or non-PSPRS person can supervise a PSPRS person. I mean, we know that. So, you know, it's really what they do functionally on the ground, literally. And, you know, and Michael's point is, is a good one, that in the past, our fuels tech, our fuels people actually participated with Forest Service in these prescribed, I guess they're called, burns. That is like no-go. I mean, you know, that is just a not, you know, non-starter for those folks. And I think that's, you know, that's pretty clear, that they're not gonna be participating in those, you know, in those prescribed burns or burning piles of brush. I mean, we're not, we're gonna stay away from that, because the more you get into that, the more they get this sort of, you know, firefighter kind of function, right? So it is very fact-specific, but, you know, so draw, but I think the idea here is, is trying to draw the line and make them, you know, Parks and Recreation sort of personnel helps. But I think it's also critical that, that, you know, that administratively, that they're, what they do, what they do, you know, on the ground, is restricted and controlled to very specific things, and stay completely away from, you know, any type of firefighter. Because in, again, in the past, these, you know, the brush, even post-hot shots, there, the thought was, well, let's train these guys up to be sort of, if they see a brush fire, they can respond. And that's, again, you know, no more than I could respond. And that's kind of the idea, or you or anybody else here, that if you see something, you pull your fire extinguisher out and maybe try, but we don't want that. But I think it's also critical that, that, you know, that administratively, that they're, they're, what they do, what they do, you know, on the ground is, is restricted and controlled to very specific things and stay completely away from, you know, any type of firefighter. Because in, again, in the past, these, you know, the brush, even post-hotshots, there, the thought was, well, let's train these guys up to be sort of an, if they see a brush fire, they can respond. And that's, again, you know, no more than I could respond. And that's kind of the idea, or you or anybody else here, that if you see something, you pull your fire extinguisher out and maybe try, but we don't want that to be one of their job functions. So those are things we have to be cautious about.
Councilman Chisca.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate that. Joe, could you address something for me? What are we getting from this move?
Well, I guess I can't quite answer that question. What I can say is that we do use the fuels mitigation crews for cutting trails and things like that. So we do have a use form in the department. They obviously perform other duties that are grant-funded. We do a lot of the fuels mitigation in the parks with those grants. So it makes sense in, in a lot of ways that, that they would be, report to Parks and Recreation. And like the attorney says, it does create that clear definitive line that they're not firefighters.
Okay, so do they use chainsaws?
Yes.
Do they use axes?
Yes.
Do they use shovels?
Yes.
Okay. So at some point, could somebody say, because they use chainsaws, axes, and shovels, the same implements that firefighters use, that they could be classified in an injury situation as a firefighter?
My opinion would be no more than any of my other temporary staff that do the same things. You know, we'll, we'll have people, our other seasonal staff that'll go down to Granite Creek Park, for example. If we have a tree that's an issue that we need to take down, we'll, we'll do that. So those duties are performed on a fairly regular basis with my other seasonal staff as well.
Thank you.
Joe, could I ask you something real quick? To Steve's point, and it's important to me to know this too. Do you feel like this will add a burden to you? Because you do have a lot going on.
No, it really doesn't add any burden. There's no management of that personnel. Actually, it actually helps me in a sense that, for example, we're rerouting the Turley Trail right now, and I've had the brush crews out there cutting that brush line, which has been very beneficial.
Mayor Brodeur.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Going back to a timeframe different than now, maybe, you know, 2013, when we had people testify against this city, there were employees of this city that are using a axe, using a chainsaw, using a, one of those tools, using shovels was hazardous duty, and hence they qualified for hazardous duty, right? They were doing the duties that typically are done by public safety personnel arranged in the fire department. And I would have a tendency to think that if that's the case, John, you, you were there, you know what I'm talking about. If that's the case, then maybe we shouldn't be in this business at all. Maybe we should be putting this business out for bid to the private sector that are in the business of doing this and just supervise what they're doing.
Do I understand that most of these folks are on grant?
Yes. And what I've been told by the fire department is the reason you have to leave the fuels management coordinator and fuels reduction technician is these grants are given to fire departments. They can fund seasonal help in another department, but the management function has to be done at a fire.
And I know that they work closely with Powick, the three people we have here, primarily going out to people that say, I want to clear my property of, of any hazardous foliage. And so they go out and they actually advise the people and come back and inspect it later on. So they have a function well beyond just the, these temporary employees. As far as the prescribed burns and things of that nature, you know, my discussions recently with the US Forest Service is that they plan to do a lot more prescribed burns in the future. They have anywhere from 80 to 120 people out at the airport that are prepared to do this kind of work. And, you know, they appreciate anything that we can do in a way of fuels management and removing excess, you know, biomass. But at the same time, if it gets right down to firefighting functions, they expect to be called and, you know, they have been called by the fire, the fire department here on several fires recently where they actually come out and use their hand crews and their bumper trucks and everything else to help fight the fires. So, you know, I think the way things are set up right now with, with this under Parks and Rec is probably the best, best thing that we could do. And I think it's most supportive in my mind. So, Councilman Blair.
Yeah. And I don't want to get into the management of the city. That's your job. But I also know that at some point in time, there's going to be a hierarchy of where these people are used. And that has to do with Firewise and Powick and making these communities safe that are on the periphery of our community. And they are used heavily to get the designation based upon insurance through the fire districts to claim that their community is Firewise. So it's not my job, it's your job to have that communication with Devendorf and Joe to who and where those guys are prioritized to. Is it prioritized to a trail or is it prioritized to a community to keep houses Firewise? And that's a tough call. But that's your call. So I don't care where they're at. You know, we don't need to be splitting hairs in this deal. But the bottom line is that, that separation from the fire department, I get it. And I think every chance that there is an opportunity to use them or a wedge to show that they were firefighters or some form of firefighting is probably not a good idea. But I think you have a management issue as well.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Yeah, I agree with Steve. And, you know, we just recently had a little brush fire out at Prescott Lakes and the wind was really whipping around and that thing could have gotten out of control. Prescott Lakes is a Firewise community and I think that that has helped. The Powick and the work that they do is tremendous. So I'm fine with this because I know, you know, I trust that this isn't going to put another burden on Joe. And in fact, it sounds like Joe, that is actually a benefit.
Well, and Councilwoman Ohr and Councilman Blair, if the working relationship between fire and parks wasn't what it is, this wouldn't work. Because you have to have the ability to talk about what's the priority and, you know, you're dealing with a co-management situation in a lot of respects. But there is a lot of mutual respect between the two entities and I think they can make this work. And look, if this setup is not successful, we'll back up and look at something else.
Well, I think it's just really important that everybody knows these, they do not, they stand down. They do not fight fires. That's, that's.
If I could, Mayor, does it make any sense that it didn't have to be done now, but into the future, to look at like somebody like Johnny's pre-service or other commercial ventures in this community go out for RFQ, RFP, just to get an idea of what they would charge for that service opposed to how much it's costing us? And if that is the case, do we lose the opportunity to get these grants to fund our programs?
There are some limitations about that, but I definitely think an exploration of the privatization of this is something we can do. And see if it makes sense.
Okay, let's move on.
All right. Well, while we're talking about PSPRS, let's talk about House Bill 2485 and Senate Bill 1442. These two pieces of legislation went through the state legislature this year and they had a lot of things. And then one of the issues that was, was the ability for individual trust agencies of the PSPRS, and again, there's 246 of those, to be able to choose between a 20-year amortization period for their unfunded liability and a 30-year amortization period. And again, this was added for communities and agencies to be able to make that decision, you know, based on discussion. And even though we're talking about today, because if council wants to move forward with that for the next budget year, a decision has to actually be made today. If we don't make a decision today and council wants to think about it and consider it in the future, that's possibility too. But once this is elected, it is a one-time election and that is your new amortization period. So looking at that, if we look at my bullet point number two on Slide 7, is a comparison of the rates. So on this comparison, I've included the funding level of our trust funds. As you can see, fires at 36, PDs at 25. Our 20-year rate for next year is 91.61% of all the employees pay for fire and 85.43 for police. If we would go to the 30-year amortization, of course, that would lower that payment. It's pushing those, it's pushing that liability out further. It's like going from a 20-year mortgage to a 30-year mortgage. Obviously, it reduces it significantly, 17 and 16%, you can see. That's about 100, or 1.5 million next year of reduction in our required payment to PSPRS. So what it would do is it would lower our payments over the next 20 years, but of course, it extends those payments an additional 10 years beyond that. And initial projections show that would cost about $74 million more to pay down the unfunded liability. So, and again, if council wants to do something for July 1, we would have to take action today. So we wanted to talk about it, let you guys think about it. And then we have an item on the later meetings today for council to vote on it if they want to go forward. Staff is not recommending at this time that we extend to the 30 years. This is an option council can consider at a different time, depending on different circumstances. And, you know, and again, in the future, council can still make this election and the actual wording is not 20 or 30. It's 2230. So, you know, take that for what it is. The next actuarial report, which will be out in November and December, is going to have additional information on this for our individual trusts. So that's my reluctance to, you know, give a strong recommendation to do it. I doubt that'll change my mind, but we're going to have a lot more information in the future. If council is really interested in this, I think we should really wait and get that additional information when the report comes out. You're next. The pros and cons.
We've got a couple of questions here. Councilwoman Ohr.
Yes. So Mark, if I understand, I think I understand this pretty well, taking this to 30 years will actually take the payment that we have now and extend it to about 200,000, 200 million, excuse me. Because if you take, if we pay it within the 10 years, rather than, if we, if we take the 20 years, it's 53 million additional, right?
Right.
And then the 30 years is another 74.
Yeah. Here's a graph on the screen, Slide 10.
There we go. All right.
Yeah. So with Prop 443, obviously that is looking at a 10-year payoff. These are projections. Right now, we'd be paying 53 million as an estimate to go to the 20-year. And you'd pay another 74 to go to the 30-year. So from Prop 443 to the 30-year, the differential there plus the 80 million we already owe.
200 million.
Yeah, it gets it up about 200 million.
I appreciate, and I do appreciate Senator Fann's effort on this because I understand what they were trying to do. And certainly some communities are going to probably have to go down this route. But I think for the city of Prescott to pay an extra $200 million when possibly we can get this done much sooner is the way we should go. So I would definitely feel that this is a very bad idea for us. Maybe not for everybody, but.
Any other questions on that?
Yeah, it looks like Mayor Brodeur.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll echo Billy's comments. I have no interest in going down this road whatsoever.
Okay. Just again, wanted to bring up the conversation because, because of the timeline to make it happen, decision would have to be made today. So we're going to go ahead and jump to Slide 11, which is another PSPRS question that I need direction from council on. So the final issue related to Parker Hall was the PBI, back PBI adjustments, which PSPRS is in the process of doing right now, and the refund of the excess contributions that the individuals hired before July 20 of 2011 went back from 11.65 to the 7.65, which is what they were hired at. We have to refund those additional collections that we've had over the last several years. 106 of our former employees qualify for those refunds to go back. That's about, just around a million dollars, million four plus interest that we will have to pay back to these people. The final determination on interest is going through the courts right now. We hope to have a decision in the next couple of weeks. But of course, it's the courts, so it could take longer. That doesn't prevent the city from proceeding with the repayment of the, the amounts that were collected to reduce our interest costs, no matter which way it may go.
Mark, what would you say the impact of the interest in it maximum would be?
Well, we're estimating the interest would, a top end possible interest would be 200, 211,000. It's probably going to be lower than that. But we wanted to budget it at that 211, just so that we had appropriation to resolve this issue when it comes forward. Two options for the repayment are really available. One option is we can make the repayment. We can get credit memos from PSPRS and take credit against what we're sending them in the next fiscal year. This, of course, will increase our unfunded liability by a million dollars and whatever the interest cost is. And the other option would be to pay this refund out of our current other source, our reserves and the general fund. City staff looked at it, and I got a couple more slides to talk about it, but we're really think the right way to do this would be to pay the, the amounts back out of the excess fund balance in the general fund so that we can keep bringing down our, our, our balance at PSPRS. So what that means is we've increased the tentative budget to allow for this method of payment. So in the tentative budget you'll look at today, it has had that increased. Again, that doesn't mean we have to do it. That doesn't mean if council says, no, we want to take a credit, we don't want to do that, we can obviously reduce it before final budget. I included the general fund summary here. Obviously, you can see the change in fund balance from operation with all of our changes. We had a surplus on operations of about a million dollars. We had our capital projects. And then we have the contingent use of the reserve, which deals with those long-term liabilities remaining from the retirement obligations the city has, and this 1.2 million dollars approximately for this repayment, making it 1.7. So when we take that in account, general fund still has a $30 million projected fund balance, still has the full reserve policy in place plus an additional 15.6 million in unassigned fund balance for whatever council determines capital needs in the future, grants at the airport, whatever, you know, come, comes that way. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions about the repayment approach.
Well, I don't really have any questions. I would just like to, to say I appreciate your recommendation and the work you've done on this. And I think it's a good one. The sooner the better. We get this off our back.
Do I have a joint consensus? Go ahead and take it out of the general fund reserves?
Yes.
Okay.
Mark, can I ask you just one question in terms of Parker and Hall? Is this it going forward?
Yes. This, the, the other issues with Parker Hall were resolved with the legislation in 2016 and the vote. Got rid of some of the issues that were in that debate. The remaining issues were related to this, this refund, the contribution rates. As, you know, as we talked about, 106 are getting it right now. 42 of our employees are paying the higher 11.65. They were hired after that July date. You know, we have 78 currently paying the lower. But as, you know, as turnover happens, those numbers will switch and more and more will be paying the 11.65. But this is the end of the impact related to Parker Hall.
Mayor Brodeur.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question. I think I heard you say we still have 30 million in the reserve.
Yes, sir.
I think through this whole process over the last year or so, the extrapolation of 6-point-something million, maybe 7 million is going to be our mandated number. Is that a correct statement?
For the PSPRS mandated contribution. And that is budgeted in the general fund.
Right.
So that's.
And if, and if indeed 443 passes, you could take 100%, because you're mandated to take 100% of whatever that money is, which would be approximately 11 million dollars, 12 million dollars. So then you have 11 plus 6 or 7 plus maybe another 10 out of the reserve. And then all of a sudden, you've paid up your liability to a point that's more manageable? Now by policy, can we do that?
Yeah, by policy, council can decide to send, do whatever they want with their, with any of their fund balance.
Yeah. So all of a sudden, instead of having a 78 million liability, what would our liability look like?
Well, again, I'm not going to try to do numbers on the slide, but it would be less, yes.
Oh, it'd be significantly less. Okay. Thank, thank you, Mark.
So Mark, I want to confirm something too, if you don't mind. On the, when it comes to the reserves, the actually unassigned is 15 million.
Correct.
So it's out of the 30. So, okay.
15.6, yes.
And that's all we have. That is our rainy day.
Well, the operating reserve pol- Well, the operating reserve policy you see on the top of that column, the 7.3, is also a reserve. It's the 20% required reserve that council has adopted in policy.
Okay.
The others are obligated for internal loans related to the golf course, some capital projects, which are also as a reserve, council could undo. It was done by resolution several years ago, so.
Okay, thank you.
The only way that reserve would be replenished, Mark, is at the end of the year that our reserve, that our revenue was up, or we didn't spend everything that we.
Exactly, yeah. You know, and there are needs for the reserve in the future, as we talked about when we went in detail on this. Vehicle replacement fund is pretty well depleted. Replacing squad cars and fire trucks in the future is going to have to come from somewhere, those type of things.
Thank you.
Mayor Brodman.
Thank you. While I appreciate that there are always needs in the future, one of the imminent needs in the future is to demonstrate to the public we're serious about taking care of our liability, and we need to move forward and get this monkey off our back. And the only tool we have is a legislative body, is the budget. And in the budget, if we can't commit to the public we're serious about taking care of what we have to take care of, you're going to lose 443.
That's exactly right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Brodman.
So, on slide 13, I'm sorry, were there any more questions?
No, we're okay. They keep punching in and punching out, so.
Okay. Just slide 13 is a recap with the increased contingency related to the repayment of the PSPRS Parker Hall decision, as well as the reductions in the operating budget related to the removal of the reorganizations and the G-Prep. This is our tentative budget, which, of course, is on our state legal forums, we'll talk about later. We had 2.8% increase in operating budget, which is good considering all the things we had to deal with this year. Obviously, capital, we're going to talk about extensively here. And then you see the big increase, again, that's in the contingencies, and a lot of that's related to the Parker Hall, and then the additional grants, and as well as the Prop 443 special revenue fund. In case it passes, you need the budget authority to send the money. So, with that, we'll get into part two, unless there's any other questions.
Yeah, I have one question. You know, I looked down here, last year, we spent 167 million, and now we're planning on spending 188 million. What, and I know a lot of that planning is on capital improvements that we know full well we won't get done. We won't get, I mean, we've already demonstrated the inability to move forward on projects in a timely manner. And I don't know why we would schedule to spend this money to move forward on projects we know we don't have the capability of getting done. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. Maybe we ought to back off some of the projected capital projects. I'm not saying eliminate them, but back off for the fiscal year 18 and move forward with a number closer to what we spent last year.
Good comments, Councilman. That's kind of the second half of our presentation, so we can talk about that when we look at the individual project. With that, I just wanted to start this, and I'll turn it over to engineering. We worked with Public Works on the centralization project, looking at slide 15. We looked at it, they looked at a different plan to kind of stretch out some of the capital stuff, and we moved about 22 million out beyond the current five-year plan. In addition to that, we talked with WIFA about different financing terms as far as longer terms. A lot of these projects are 50-year projects, 60-year projects. So, why do we need to finance them over 20 years? WIFA was amenable to working with us to try to come up with a solution. Again, if WIFA doesn't do it, we have other financing options. But with the longer timeframe, with moving half of these centralization projects out beyond the five-year period, we're looking at a lot more reasonable, rough estimate of possible rate increases. And again, we will be doing a rate study for details, but we'd be looking more at a 2% to 3% increase per year, so about a 13% over the next five years, as opposed to the, you know, 60, 70 that we were looking at before. So, we did do that, working with Public Works, good options. It's going to hopefully keep us in compliance as we move forward.
Mark, do you want to allude a little bit to the WIFA loan and its interest rates? Because they are very attractive.
Yeah, and again, that's why we use WIFA, and I spent a lot of time talking with WIFA last week about this, and they don't do 30-year loans right now. They have gotten permission recently to look at that option, and they're, be glad to let us take that forward to their board and look at the current loan application we have for this 22 million worth of centralization projects is in with WIFA. It would be a, possibly around a 2.5% interest rate for a 30-year term, which is another thing that makes this affordable possible option as we move forward.
Mark, could you enlighten the citizens that don't do this all the time? What is WIFA?
I'm sorry.
Rather than a WIFABall?
It's a good point, Councilman. WIFA is Arizona Water Infrastructure Financing Authority. They work with communities and water districts and other things around the state to make affordable financing, and they do that through EPA grants. This loan that we are currently working with them on, for instance, has a 20% subsidy, which means we get the AAA bond rating, plus they will pay 20% of the interest cost debt service on that. So, we're actually, 80% of the AAA rate is how the loan percentage will be set. And again, that's why it's, there are additional requirements as federal grants go with environmental studies and those type of things, but generally, they are a better option for financing. With that, I will turn it over to Public Works to answer some of the other questions that came up two weeks ago.
Good morning, Mayor Council. Thank you, Mr. Woodfield. And we met with you last year. You had some questions and some directions for us, and as always, we take it very seriously. One of the items that Mr. Woodfield talked about was centralization, and I want to thank Mark for talking to WIFA and trying to see if he can have better flexibility in stretching the loan. So, thank you, Mark. So, that is one of the issues you brought up. The other one that you wanted to have the FY '17 and '18 CIP budget reshow to you by fund, and we have that, and Mr. Oros is going to talk about it. And one more was shimmer drive, which currently is not in our funding, but Mayor and Council expressed a desire that if there's any way that we can bring it on top, and with City Manager Lamar's direction, that we seriously look into it, and we appreciate all the guidance we have. So, for shimmer drive, we really have some options. The project that was planned to be done was about $2 million, which would take care of all the issues. We have a lot of water and flooding issues, so forth. And I'm going to let Mr. Oros to give you the details, but basically, one option, could be two options, is to switch two of the projects that we have funded with shimmer drive, so we can do the entire project. Or the other one, perhaps an easier way, spend less money to improve the driving surface and make it look good, and that would give us a road that would last us a good five, six years. But when Mr. Oros gives you more detail, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. At this point, unless you have any questions, I'll ask Mr. Oros to join us.
Mayor, City Council, Steve Oros, Public Works, capital projects and program development. Wanted to go over in more detail what Henry briefed you on, looking at the current fiscal year '17 projects. This is how the funding broke down by the Streets Fund, which was about 46% of the dollars that were put under contract. 30% was from the Water Fund, 18% from the wastewater fund, Aqua for Protection Fee Fund was about 1% of the total contracts issued. Solid Waste was about 3%, and 2% were other miscellaneous project and funding sources. And this represents a total of about 45 million of projects that are either under contract today, or will be under contract with the council's concurrence within the next one to two months. We have five or six projects that are currently out to bid, bids under review that are in motion. We've been getting our stride and getting projects delivered. We did go through some, obviously with Mr. Hash, myself, and Mr. Andrews, quite a management change within Public Works. We've worked on standards, we've gotten projects moving, and we're getting to be delivering more projects than we have in the past couple of years.
I got a question on the ones that are going out for RFP right now. Will they be paid with FY '18 funds or FY '17 funds?
'18.
Okay.
Because, well, there's one or two that are coming up in the next two meetings this fiscal year, but the rest are coming from '18.
So, when you said 45 million in expenditures in FY '17, that was not including anything that's going to be in the future? That's 45 million that was paid out this year?
Not paid out this year, is under contract. As we get contracts moving, there are times when we can finish it within a fiscal year, other times the contract starts and one fiscal year goes into the next. And we're in that window right now where we have, we have like five or six projects in the last 30 days that have gotten under contract. We have another half dozen projects that are in the process right now that kind of bridge this June, July, August window. It's, they're out of our shop right now on the street, or going to be on the street within the next few weeks. So, we put those together into this chart.
So, if they're already out on contract, then you're using FY '17 funding?
Correct.
If they're not yet out on contract, it's going to be FY '18 funding, more than likely?
Correct. But how the dollars work, it's not one bucket, and then that bucket goes away. We work with the fund balance, and the fund balance goes from year to year. So, once we get under contract, say this year, we may be spending dollars in '18, but those dollars have been moved from '17 to '18 as we go forward, and Mark is going to explain the fund balance probably much better than I could.
Yeah, please do that.
Okay, and just to clarify, it doesn't matter so much when a contract is awarded, it matters when the work is done. For a project to be charged to fiscal year '17, whatever portion is completed by June 30 of '17 is what will be charged to '17. And then whatever's done in the next fiscal year will be charged in that year. That's, so the fact that it was awarded in '17, but, you know, 10% was done in '17, only 10% of that contract, even though awarded in '17, will be charged there. As Mr. Oros pointed out, if the full amount was budgeted this year and it's not spent because the work wasn't done, it goes into fund balance and is available to be spent in the following year.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, I had asked Lars, and I appreciate Lars doing this, to look at the budget versus actual on capital for the last three years. So, I'm asking him to put this up so they can see this.
Again, this is City Manager pointing out, the budget here is the first column, the actual, it's either actual or estimated ending for '17. Obviously, we don't have actuals yet. So, in '16, we budgeted 46.5 million. We spent 17.3, and in '15, we budgeted 70.2, and spent 22.4.
As you can see, in the percentage expended by fiscal year, there is an upward trend of the expenditures, and as we look to '18, that percentage will continue to grow, because right now, of the top 10 projects that are listed in the budget, in both the Streets section and the Utility and Solid Waste sections, 100% of those projects are in process today. And of the top 20 projects in both lists, 18 of the 20 are in process today. We're moving. They're in various stages of design, construction, they're moving. We're not starting from zero and thinking about our project July 1, and then we move through our process. So, we have made quite a bit of headway in the delivery of projects, and we're moving forward. The past history is, was, is not pretty. We're moving forward to get better and better and better. And with the implementations that Director Hash has implemented, we're moving in the right direction. The trend is not going the opposite direction.
Well, again, one of my concerns is, you know, we have a limited number of folks that put in for our contracts in town. How many, how many firms do we normally deal with? Four, five, or six? We're not having more firms coming in. We're not seeing a growth in firms that are going to come in and do this additional work. You're going to be, you know, having probably the same finite number of firms doing the work. So, again, I'm not sure that I'm confident that we're going to see a big increase here.
For example, that's a very good question, Mr. Mayor. For example, one of the construction contracts that's scheduled for the next meeting is from a new firm that we've not worked with. We've checked the references, very good firm, coming out of Phoenix to take care of some water improvements for us. We have had, I believe, there's at least two engineering firms that have not had offices here in Prescott, have offices now in Prescott, that are providing us engineering services locally. So, there is a trend of, you know, we have, you know, a half dozen contractors that do various projects for the city for construction here. We also have about a half dozen consultants that provide engineering for us that are locally. We do draw from Flagstaff, we do draw from Phoenix as the process evolves for the various needs for each of the projects that we have in our capital program. So, we do have a variety. Now, some projects are high dollar. It's one firm and may take 10 million. That's a big chunk. We have several projects that are in the couple hundred thousand dollar range, and those move faster. So, there's quite a pool of talent available, both construction and design, that we have access to.
Well, I'd just like to offer, too, that I've talked to some of these contracting firms, and even though they might be bringing their management staff here, they look at the local folks to actually do a lot of the work. And, because if they have to bring people from outside, they're paying per diem, and that, you know, that increases their costs, so they try and hire locally. So, again, I'm just not certain that we have sufficient workforce, even if we bring in, you know, new construction management teams from outside of Prescott.
Councilman Chisca?
Thanks, Mayor. Steve, what is the driver of this past history that you say is not pretty?
The history, part of what we had been seeing when Director Hash, myself, and City Engineer Mr. Andrews started looking at the budget, a lot of the budgets in past years had included design and construction in the same year. For some reason, they had been including all that in one year with a brand-new project. When we started looking at the budget and getting our handle on it, we were going, "That doesn't make sense." You know, because most design projects take one to two years, depending on the complexity, some a little less, some a little more. But it takes a year or two to do the design and get it ready to bid. Some of the construction projects can be done in a year, some take multiple years to complete. So, as we started looking at the budget, we started looking at the numbers and saying, "Okay, let's make this a realistic budget of what can we deliver, or what should we be able to deliver if everything was working well?" And that's how we started, and you see the big change from '15 to '16, is that we started putting in design in one year, construction in a year or two following, depending on the scope and complexity of the project. We've also started including inspection costs, which weren't included previously, and some other project costs, so we can get a true project cost for projects. So, we've been making some major adjustments, trying to get the budget to fit a more realistic schedule. But again, as we've explained a couple of times, projects on the, in the design side sometimes move very well, and as a And as the schedule goes, we get it done on time. There's other times when we look at, during the design of a project, there's some detours that come about. And sometimes we do our engineering studies that are specific for the project, very detailed. And those studies may show that we need to expand a water line. Maybe we need to include a drainage element. So there's a lot of things that may cause the schedule to extend a little bit. There's, sometimes there's easements that are required, either temporary or permanent easements for a water line, a drainage line. The construction aspects of the project, we get into the nitty-gritty details of how we're going to build this and we say, we need a little extra space, so that process takes time.
So does this mean that we have a whole bunch of money that's just hanging out there?
No. We have, as Mr. Woodfield has identified and shared with the council, there's a fund balance. We have a number of dollars that come into the various funds, whether it's the street fund, the water, wastewater, solid waste funds annually. We have projects lined up. We have more projects than dollars. So we have the ability to deliver projects. The process that we go through is not very, in the design side, there are things that extend delivery of projects. But once we get to construction, that moves fairly rapidly. So we don't have a pool of money just sitting there doing nothing. We're spending it as fast as we can. And we're, we've, through Mr. Andrews' efforts with City Engineer, we've developed better engineering standards, better details, better construction plans. So we're getting better projects. We're not coming back to you during construction saying, we need X dollars more to finish because we didn't have everything together. We minimize that greatly. So we have better project management, better delivery. So we've made those changes in the past couple of years. We're starting to see the fruit of that labor and we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
I don't like the term where you're spending it as fast as we can. I think really what we're doing is we're investing the money that can't be put out on a contract right away. Is that not correct?
Yeah, we do invest our idle money to maximize our earnings. We try to have maturities in that investment to, you know, to align up with our capital plan. You know, if we're not going to need it for two years, we can invest it for two years to increase our yield a little bit. In attempt to address Councilman Chisca's question, the, the only cash that's setting around would be, of course, the fund balance as we move forward. We can recap those real quick if you would like. This is from our presentation we did about two weeks ago. So in streets, starting the year, we're projecting about nineteen point four million in cash. Water, we're projecting about forty-two point one million in cash. And wastewater, thirteen point five. And that's their full fund balances that are rolling. So there is cash, but it's related to that fund balance, which we reappropriate.
Councilwoman Wurkach.
I, Steve, I think we discussed this last time, but I've noticed on the list, on page sixteen, that there are several projects where you're proposing to spend a small amount of money in FY '18. The, the actual bulk of the money will be spent beyond the five-year capital program. Can you explain why that is?
Yes. But I would like to clarify one thing before we move to that. When I meant that we're spending as fast as we can, we're trying to deliver the projects as fast as we can, which expends those dollars. And I know the council's goal is to deliver projects, so we're trying to get there. And that's what I was meaning by that.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Well, I'm looking at the Goodwin Street, South Washington Avenue pavement project as an example. There's, there's a few others there, too.
Right. And those projects are in design right now. In previous budgets, there was funding for those. As we started to get into this balanced, performance-based budgeting this year, we found out that we needed to spread projects out. So what we're trying to do is get the projects to a design point that we have everything close. We've got all the details worked out. We just need to wait for the time when the funding is available for the construction, finish off the plans, and begin construction. So that's what the goal was, is to try to get the projects that are in progress to a logical stopping point, not midstream.
Is there a possibility that the design is premature and things could change in that five years?
And that's why we're not taking the plans to a completion state. We know things change and evolve. Most of these projects that are getting extended are full reconstruction projects, curbs, sidewalks, roadway, utilities. We know not much will change because we've already addressed all those major issues. If there was a, just a pavement-only project, sure, in a couple of years, when funding's available for that. There could be other issues that come up. Could be a drainage issue. It could be a water, it could be a wastewater issue. So, but all the projects that are in progress are more reconstruction-type.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Yes, well, I would just like to say, I think for a city as old as Prescott, our streets and roads look quite good.
Thank you.
And I just want to say that. So let's go back to the one where you showed the percentage of work completed and...
Sure. Can you put it back? No, not this, the percentage work?
The one that was before this. Not that one, no. There it is, thank you. So if you were to project fiscal year eighteen, based on what you're saying, things are improving, going the better of the way, where would we be as far as the percentage, as far as on the budget that you're asking for? What's your projection?
That's a very good crystal ball question.
I know, I'm sorry.
I know what Director Hash's number would be is a hundred percent.
Well, just, and then next year, we'll ask you, how did you do? No?
Yeah. In looking at it, of the budget that we have today for you...
Yeah.
I would say we're sixty-plus percent.
Okay.
That would be my guess, based on, because of where we are in the process, we have so many projects that we're not starting from ground zero. They're moving, they're in process. And short of some of these other issues that we talked about, that we are, that are unforeseen right now. One of the other things that come up during our project processing, we do have community meetings and we are responsive to those. Sometimes during a community meeting, there's an observation that we were not aware of that's a very good point that we need to address. So there's another point that we have to plan for to address projects and keep them moving, so.
And I appreciate, I've been to most of those community meetings and I know they go very well. So, Michael, if you don't mind, I would like to ask you, what's your reflection on this? And where, what, what is your recommendation?
Well, you know, I appreciate Steve's candor and honesty about it. You know, I think you want your capital budget specifically for the next fiscal year is what we're specifically talking about, to be as accurate as humanly possible, because you're inflating both expectations and the budget you're passing.
So we need sensible expectations.
Right. And I appreciate you being honest about sixty percent's realistic or set, you know...
It'll probably be more of us trying to be conservative.
Yeah, but that's good, because I think a conservative number sets a reasonable bar. I, I mean, maybe you feel like you're in the hot seat, Stephen, I'm sorry for that, but I, I think this dialogue had to happen based on years of, and you are improving, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing to make it better. But when we're delivering between thirty and forty percent of what we're budgeting, do you really need the budget a hundred percent is a policy question you guys got to decide upon? I mean, I, because you are artificially inflating your budget if you're not going to deliver a hundred percent of the projects. Now, do you want to give yourself wiggle room? Sure. But do you need the fund...
Be careful with that term.
Yeah, I know. People don't like that, I guess. But I mean, if, and I think that we have to rely on the Public Works Department and their candor about what's realistic to deliver. And if you can't deliver more than seventy-five percent of the projects, don't budget more than seventy-five percent of the projects.
Mr. Mayor?
That's still a crystal ball question.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, can I expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. One of the other points that we have, in an effort to deliver the most projects that we can and meet the, the goal of the capital program, as we've said, some projects run into something that extends them a little longer, others move forward. If we don't have those projects in the budget, we may deliver less projects because if a project that's, we're counting on spending, say, ten million dollars on, gets extended out, we just didn't deliver that. But if we have these other projects that are in the queue, moving along through our multiple project managers that we have, we have the flexibility to deliver more than if we have just, say if we had five projects we want to deliver next year. We know we could do that hands down. However, if one of those gets delayed for some reason, we just lost twenty percent of our projects. That's huge. But if we have a more of a, say, a menu approach to projects that we can move simultaneously, they will all get delivered, but we have a better chance of delivering more projects if they're all moving down the, down the road, so to speak.
Mr. Mayor, I think Mr. Oroz did a good job. You know, I've asked, when I started here first, Mr. Woodfield talked to me and he wasn't quite happy why we had so much money sitting in the books. I agreed with him. And I think Mr. Oroz really stated most of the reasons. Number one, I think as far as budgeting, since we are talking budget, in my opinion, we were not doing correctly. Because the, the number you saw in your budget for a construction was only construction. It's a lot more than construction. We need to pay several hundred thousand dollars, sometime more, for design. We need to give money for right-of-way acquisition. We have project managers, we have inspectors in-house and outside. So to do it correctly, we need to do it. So it took a while to do it together. So when we give you a project number, that covers everything. And then, I'm repeating some of the things you said, but I think it's important. We talked about a project, we put five million dollar in the budget and council approved, and we started the design, year, year and a half before the project can start. I've always said, folks, if you cannot spend the money, deliver it that year, do not put it in the book. And I'm very adamant to that. Don't put it in the book. So if you think it's going to take you a year and a half for design, with part of the design money this year, half the other, then the construction goes the year after. Because you're absolutely correct, we agree with you, that is all about perception. We have money, we... So you see a lot of design projects right now in the works for the projects that we believe is important to you. We have been talking about it for two, three years. So the design, when it's completed, the next thing is actually to go ahead to build a project. So I believe, Mr. Oroz, the very same question I asked Mr. Oroz yesterday. If you're not going to deliver one hundred percent, why are you putting it in there? And his answer, I think it's fair. We don't know what goes wrong with what project. That's the thing. We don't have the crystal ball. So if you have, you start ten projects and there are things that are a little bit bumpy on two of them, we may not spend all the money on the two projects. That's why you, you will not see ninety percent, a hundred percent. Our aim is to be as close to that number as possible. If I tell you it's going to be a hundred percent, ninety-five percent, probably I'm not being honest with you. But there is no reason for us to do such a good job that we'll be closer to eighty, eighty-five percent in a couple of years. We have come a long way from small percentage higher. We have engineering standards in place, which is a huge help. Thank you for your support. That takes away many questions and many uncertainties with us, with the contractor, with the developers. So that's all gone away. We have a good system for bad process. And if I may add, just to comment something, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned. I heard today that in fact, one of our good-sized local contractor is looking for a job. He's asking us what's coming up because he wants to do more, just to know. I, I believe we recovered, but then again, I didn't talk to that person directly. Just want to put your mind at ease that we hear you, we agree with you, and we are really trying our best. So if you go from a small percentage to seventy percent or more in a fairly short time, I wasn't here for FY '15 budget, I didn't prepare that budget, but after that.
Thanks. A comment I'll make, too, is that, you know, since we do go with the lowest bidder and sometimes the work of the lowest bidder is not, you know, sufficient and we have to go back and do rework, you know, the work that he would have gone on to and done if he had done it right, is held off for a while while he goes back and makes corrections. So, you know, we understand, and I know I've talked to the city attorney about, you know, are we doing the right thing right now in our, our contract, you know, going with the lowest bidder? Is there another, you know, another model out there that we ought to be looking at that maybe we're getting best value rather than lowest bidder? So, you know, I know that, that discussion's going on and I think it's very appropriate.
Yeah. And we are currently working with the legal department on exploring what it is a, what is a best value type procurement process look like, the legality of it, how does it work with the state codes and such? So the conversation has started. It's going to be a little bit before we can get to that, but it is a good point.
Yeah, I understand that.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim?
Thanks, Mayor. Similar to you, you know, you didn't particularly like the terminology, spending it as fast as we can. I heard something here that concerns me a little bit. And, you know, it was, you know, we're going to get a better this and better that. Well, better to whom? You know, this, and I don't want to harp on one of our last projects we've been working on, that we've been beat around the ears with for the last three, four months. Sometimes I get a sense that things are over-engineered, things are over-planned, things are over-beautified, things are over this and over that. And then I hear you say, well, we had a community cluster meeting somewhere and from what I've listened to, I don't think a whole lot of people in that neighborhood liked the idea of cutting a road in two and putting a bunch of trees in the middle, turning their street into half the size it used to be and then having to go up to the end of the road to turn around and get into the driveway. So I'm not so sure that we do a good job in communicating with local residents, the cause and effect of what's going to happen in their front yard. I'm just sharing it with you. I've got some concerns over that.
Councilwoman Ohr.
Yes, here I go again. Sorry about this.
That's okay.
I do not think smoke tree lane. I can't even imagine what it's going to look like in six years by the time we get around to doing something to it. Just got to say.
That leads into a good topic of, thank you.
I got one more question here. Councilwoman, or Councilwoman Lenzel.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, Henry, whoever. First of all, let me, let me address Jim's concern. That Alarkin project, is it going way over? Yes. But as far as communication, I think we communicated the hell out of that project. We, we have more community meetings. I think there was two or three presentations to us with designs. So communication wasn't it. I think there are people frustrated with the length of time. And I, I get that. But as far as communication, what that end scope of work was going to be, I think we did our job on that. You can't force people to listen, but we did our job on, on saying it.
The, if I may, Mr. Mayor, and I'm not here to argue, we'll listen. The handful of people who come to you, talking to you generally are against. The other ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent that you don't hear from generally are in favor, otherwise you'll be hearing from them. We just heard a couple of, of people who live in the area talking to Mr. Andrews yesterday. They are so happy, so thankful for what is happening in there. With some rain, we said June twentieth is substantial completion time. On June twentieth, they're going to do the paving, if not the day before. We can't wait for the project to complete. We haven't spent, because this has come up several times, so I need to address it. We haven't spent so much money on trees or anything. What we are doing, we are turning a road that used to be like a runway, very, very unsafe, as Councilman Lamerson always, safety is a big issue. Seventy foot wide, no defined parking space, a lot of contaminants because of the oil and other things. So we have turned it to a win-win-win-win project. This road, we're making a safe road, traffic-wise, driving, for bicycles. Road needed construction... Road needed construction, we're doing construction. In the meantime, as you well know, we are under the order by ADQ to do certain things. Some of the soil you think is beautification, it is, we took advantage of it, but there are bio soils that would help the contaminants and eventually would help us with the odor. And if you put a few trees, matter of very, very little money. So most of the work on that street had to be done anyway. If you spend a few thousand dollars more to make it beautified and make so many people happy, I think it couldn't be a better project. Yes, any road project has inconvenience construction, and this is one of them. I wish we could finish a project over the week, but all I'm asking is just to wait a bit longer, let the road to be paved, and let these little plants and maybe smaller trees be established, then we can talk about that. A lot of people, we can't wait to throw a barbecue because of it. People who live there and drive in there. I also have heard two people who are against it. Thanks.
If I can continue, Mayor, I just want to make that comment. I don't know if I can get back to it. Steve, I just, I'm going to guess the year before, because I don't have it. We put the pavement preservation program, the amount was probably the same, last year, 3.5 million?
Actually, last year was 5 million in the budget.
It was 5. Okay, did we spend that?
We spent 4.1-ish.
Okay. I'm just looking at these big dollar items. We're most likely, the state's going to widen that 89A, right? That's going to happen.
There's two parts to 89 widening. There's the cities project, which is from essentially 89A Potter's House driveway, south past the Fippen. That's our project that's bidding in a couple of hours today. And then the ADOT project, which is from 89A north to the, where they stopped the widening with the first phase, up by Deepwater Roundabout. That's an ADOT project that's happening. They're supposed to be going on to the bid in the next 30 days as well.
So, all goes well, your projections, we should spend close to 90, if not more, percent of that 4.3 million on that project.
Oh, definitely.
18.
Yes.
Okay. The last one's kind of small. The $100,000 street light intersection LED conversion project?
Correct.
We doing that in-house?
Yes. From what, and Mr. Andrews can speak to more of the details since it's in the traffic group, but mainly that's a switch from the incandescent lighting to LED, which is much more energy efficient, which is, the goal is to lower our power bills.
So we should, and the return is within 10 years, but we'll see.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is there anything else, Charles? Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Orr.
Yeah, I'd just like to make the comment. You know, we have some beautiful streets, Park Avenue, Mount Vernon, the ones that come to mind immediately, and I think our Larkin is going to be added to that list. I had the opportunity to stop off to the side and go, not go down it, but look at it. It will absolutely be, I think, a great benefit to the city.
Great, thank you.
I'm sure those people, after we get this done, I think Greg is right, it's the length of time that's been frustrating, and especially the people that have businesses on the side streets, so, yeah.
Mayor Protim.
Thank you. I agree. I think Larkin's going to be nice.
Yeah.
All right? But I also agree with unrealistic expectation, and we took months of meetings with different people, told them what was going to happen, didn't. All right? So the expectation was that it was going to happen, but it didn't, and it didn't, and it didn't. So people are unhappy. You can count on it. All right? So now they're going to look for all kinds of things to be wrong with the street. I agree with Henry. It's going to be a safer street. I think anytime that you can take a freeway and turn it into a neighborhood, you've done a good job, especially if it's pretty. All right? And I understand some of this, I do, but the point still remains. If you deliver unrealistic expectations, you're going to get some unpleasurable response. That's the way it works.
Okay. Thank you. I think, unless there's any more questions about that, I'll get on with the rest of our brief presentation.
Whose job is it to make sure that these things are kept on track in a timely manner?
It's my department, or division, sorry.
Thank you for taking ownership. Appreciate it.
Okay. And just to get back to, because I do want to point out some differences between this current fiscal year '17 and '18. If you notice, the streets funding of the projects this year is 46%, water is 30%, 18 wastewater. In '18, how the projects fund in this upcoming budget year, it's about 30% from the street fund, 47% from the water, again, about 18 in the wastewater, and the other funds, less than 2% each. Again, this kind of goes to Councilman Orr's comment about a priority and things. It just happens that in our collective CIP, there's quite a few high-dollar water fund projects that are in the works, needed to operate our water system, that have come up in this fiscal year. Not as many street-funded projects, dollar-wise. So it changes from year to year. The priorities that we set are not just, we're going to focus on water this year, or focus on streets that year. That's not how we do things. We look at the priorities for projects from a multiple angles. We look at the condition of the pavement, we look at the condition of the water lines, wastewater lines, drainage, other engineering factors. We put all that together and we identify the needs. Sometimes a street is needed, and then we look at the water and wastewater, we say, yep, all that's good, or it needs to be incorporated. So it becomes a full reconstruction. Maybe it's a water line project that just waters all that we need. So we do look at the full range of all these elements, put them into a process, and that's how we prioritize projects. One of the other key elements that we've heard from this council is focus on the downtown. Make sure the downtown is functional, safe, utilities, basic services are met, public safety is met. Focus on that, which we have been. So that's why you'll see some of these other streets and other projects that are mostly from the street-driven perspective are lower on the priority list because we're focusing more on the downtown and the water infrastructure, wastewater infrastructure. So that's why the funding evolves and changes from year to year.
Councilman Blair?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I think one is looking at Shalimar, and I think Public Works has done a great job. I drove it twice yesterday. It's been very well patched, and I think the deficiency in my mind is the speed bumps haven't been painted, you don't know they're there, and before you know it, you've lost your rear end to, you know, two miles back. There has to be a way to determine, like on Shalimar, I think it needs to be repaired, but also looking at the east side of Rosser Street and counting the volumes of cars that utilize the infrastructure. That has to be a high priority to which we place sooner than later. That's one of the questions I have, or comments, I should say, and the other one would be from Mark Woodfield. You get aggravated in the fact of what we can charge and what we can't charge on a building permit, and talking to the community to the east of us, they are and have been charging a infrastructure impact fee on their building permits. Do we have the ability to do that as a city? And the reason why I bring it up is when you start talking about infrastructure and improvements, and you start talking about Walden Ranch and the building permits that are in there, or going to be in there, as well as the new development of Ron James on Willow Creek Road and the 200-plus houses, there should be a way that we as a city be able to charge an infrastructure impact fee on the building permit, because at some point in time, those intersections of Pioneer Park and Willow Creek Road are going to have to be improved, and the volume of traffic on those roads are directly associated with impact from the developments. So can we or can we not, Mr. Lawyer, charging the building permit, or Mr. Woodfield, an impact infrastructure fee?
We do charge infrastructure impact fees on the building permits for water and wastewater for the different zones that we have. If you're referring to a streets impact fee, that was looked at the last time we did an impact fee study, and at that time, the 10-year project that was brought forward didn't have any capacity projects in it. They were just maintenance, reconstructs, those type of things. For it to be an impact fee, it has to be a capacity increase, and only that increased capacity component can be part of the impact fee. So if you're adding a lane, yes, that can be on the impact fee. We are scheduling to start a new rate study in fiscal year '18. We will definitely be looking at the current 10-year plan for streets to see if there are capacity charges that would justify the implementation of streets, if you will, impact fee.
I just don't want that cart to get out of the barn without us being able to address it, because at some point in time, as traffic evolves on the north side, Pioneer Parkway and the developments that are going on out there off of Willow Creek Road, you know there's going to be impact on the roads, and to do it after the fact absolutely won't happen. So I think we need to be ahead of the game, and if there isn't a plan, they need to put a plan together through Public Works so that we can address these things and not use our residential money, less charges to people that are causing the impact.
Mayor, may I just make, I'd just like to take your opportunity, because this is a good time. Thank you, Mr. Blair. I know you bring that up often, and it's a good thing to bring up the conversation I had today, this morning with my staff, because we are talking budget. Mr. Blair, I have the same question about solid waste and delivery and pickup. We are adding a lot of new areas. There are no impact fees. Potentially, we may need new equipment, new truck, new people. There is no money from development to purchase all this. Basically, the rest of the customers need to come up. So I want to thank you for that. There's something for us to look into.
I know some of this is state-regulated.
Yeah, that's the problem. You know, our impact fees that we can charge are strictly created by state law, and state law, there's, right now, there's no capital improvement impact fee for solid waste. It strictly has to be a function of your fee structure.
And I get that. I'm talking about the roads.
But the roads issue, and let's take, for instance, the 89 widening from Pioneer Parkway to the, towards the south. If that's going to be widened from two to four lanes, you know, we don't, we did not have that in our impact, we did not have a street impact fee for that project, presumably because it's an existing deficiency and the widening is not created by prospective growth out there. So remember, it's, it has to be proportionate to growth, and it can't be to cure an existing deficiency. That's, that's the limitation on impact fees when you can charge them. Willow Creek Road, for instance, right now, it's a two-lane road. You know, it, part of, frankly, the simpler way of, if that needs to be widened when that project gets developed, the simpler way is you require the developer to pay for or to widen that road from the two to four, or six, or whatever it needs to be as a function of that development. It's a direct cost of development, just like, just like we require development to put in public infrastructure, water, sewer, roads for subdivision projects. In other words, the developer is a direct pay. The developer actually builds that infrastructure, and when the project's done, then it's turned over to the city. So I will tell you that, you know, when it comes to large development or planned development, the most direct and simpler way to get that infrastructure built is to make the developer build it, and make them build it to the standard that's in our current engineering standards so that when we get it, it lasts the 20, or 30, or 50 years it's supposed to last. I mean, that's, that's the plan, just like drainage and all those things. And I would just, that's, and that's probably the bulk, I don't know what percentage, but that's the vast majority of our public infrastructure. It's just directly built by development or by developers, and not a function of impact fees necessarily.
I get that, and I get the fact that Walden Ranch is paying their fair share of the roundabout, maybe. I mean, if we've cut it down and figured out what a quarter of it is based upon, you know, what they're generating, but again, when you have, and we know, and we know Willow Creek Road and what's going on in the north, with all the houses and all the commercial and stuff with the hospital, and everything that's going to go on out there, I think it's better to be prepared than be unprepared.
And that's my point, though, is if you're talking about the point, the stretch between the Parkway and 89, you know, north of the Parkway, my view would be, when that development gets to build, as it's part of being built, the developer, not incrementally by building permit, but the developer pays to widen that road, or does the work itself to whatever, to the standards that we demand, and that way you have it all done at once, because, remember, impact fees generally are funding your loan payments. We're going to advance the money on infrastructure, we're going to build the infrastructure, and then as building permits come in, we collect the $2,000, $3,000 incrementally, and then we're paying, you know, we're paying because we're prefunding, on impact fees generally, we're prefunding the project. We're paying for the project, and then using impact fees to pay the debt. So the simpler and the better, in my view, and most direct way, is when it comes to planned development, is to make the developer, and we do this, make the developer install the infrastructure to our standard, and then turn it over to us when we certify that it's good to go.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you. Mr. Horos, yeah, it was never the intent to concentrate on the downtown at the expense of the rest of the community. You know, the fact of the matter is, the whole community has to be paid attention to. And to Mr. Blair's point, from a public health and safety standpoint, you have streets in disreputable condition, some places in town, while others are in very good condition, some places down. We have to prioritize based on usage. I mean, in fact, the matter is, you go over there to Shalimar and you see how much traffic usage there is, you'll see there's a lot of vehicles over there. So I do agree with that. I also agree with Jean, when she brought up certain stuff. I'm just sharing it with you that my concern, especially on road projects, is that the public's health and safety based on, you know, we're a tourism-oriented community too. We're not the only thing here. I mean, we are not solely based on tourism, and as we have incubators on all these fancy words coming out now, and you have all these things coming up all over town, you have a shift, sort of a demographic shift in traffic patterns. And we have to pay attention to that too, not just the downtown. We have to pay attention to where is the traffic? Go out on Willow Creek. I just heard something from down here. Oh, yeah, we got a two-lane highway out there on Willow Creek. Well, yeah, they're doing 60, 70 miles an hour on it too. So, you know, at some point, we're going to have to pay the piper when it comes to looking at what's going on out there for public health and safety.
True. And that's what we do is that while there's plenty of needs downtown, there are other needs across the city that we balance. For example, we, it would not be good for us to say, we're going to improve every single street downtown next year, because that would just be completely disruptive. So what we've programmed is about one project a year, addressing certain issues. We have a number of projects that are spread across the city. Our pavement preservation program is citywide. On that program, that's not focused downtown because we're looking at the other needs that are down there. We have Rosser, we have Robinson, we have Penn Eastwood, South Washington, Goodwin, we have Shemer, which we're going to talk about here in a minute. There's a variety of projects across the city that we do at the same time, but for the major projects, we try, are trying to address drainage issues that are downtown because that's a significant issue. So we do prioritize, and we do spread out across the city. We're not only doing downtown projects.
Thank you. I appreciate you putting it that way, a little differently than you were told to concentrate on downtown. It's sort of part of the truth, but not the whole truth. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Orr.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, because the council gets a lot of input from constituents, Michael, I'd like to see somewhere or another that we as a council have more input on how these streets and, because we do get a lot of information, and if there's somewhere or another that we as the council can have input on priorities.
Councilwoman Orr, I think you need to. I think that there's finite resources, and the priorities you hear from your constituents have just as much validity as what we think of as staff, and you need to have some input in terms of the picking and choosing of projects when it gets beyond, like, engineering necessity, right? And you guys are all reasonable, and you understand that.
We still need the input from...
We totally need the input, because that's our expert staff, and they're going to tell you from an engineering standpoint that Road A needs to come before Road B, but if Road A and Road B are the same... But if Road A and Road B are the same in terms of condition, you should have the ability to pick which one of those two to do.
Are there numbers of people driving on them?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, that's the other thing, too.
Craig, I'm sorry. I saw you run out of the room, and I just had a couple of questions for you, so.
That's why I was trying to get to the centralization question.
You almost got out, man.
I'm sorry, I'm not really even here today.
You're not, I'm sorry, you're on vacation?
I'm on my family vacation.
Oh, jeez. Well, I'm sorry, dude. Go ahead. Do you have, I just want to ask you real quick. You know, I'm on page 20 of this packet, and I see that between water and wastewater, there's about $46 million of projects, plus or minus.
Yes.
And I know they're all needs, but of that $46 million, what percentage or how much money could, could be potentially kicked out a little bit further, and what specific projects could be kicked out a little bit further? If it was council's will.
Is that the table that finance has modified?
And the reason I was focusing on you is because, obviously, the $46 million is a good chunk of the capital that we're doing next year, and I just wanted to talk to you specifically.
Okay. So finance has not modified this list. There is another list that has been modified with the potential of moving about $20 million of that out.
Well, that's significant.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that might go a long way, so let's look at that.
Here we go. Okay. So projects 172 through 176 are, are projects that are either under construction, under design, design will be coming forward very soon. Those are all projects that are critical to maintain compliance in the system, to reduce capacity deficiencies that we have associated with NOVs that we have because of overflows. And then when we get into Project 177, that is the Phase II expansion of the airport reclamation facility. We're proposing to put that into the next five-year window outside of the, of the current that we're looking at. Project one, so we've got 178. Project 179 actually will be split into a couple of projects. There's one piece of that, the equalization basin, that definitely is needed within the five-year window, because once we build some of the other projects, we're going to get the water to the plant, then we have to be able to handle it once it gets there. So we're proposing that... We're proposing that we'll split that project and bring that forward in the next budget year's process in order to get the equalization back into that window. Also, with this fall, we'll be doing the rate and fee study, so then we can look at all of these projects over a 10-year picture to get a true forecast in that, then to be able to talk about WFA funding and such in order to make the projects happen in that extended timeframe.
So the expenses for wastewater for the upcoming fiscal year are now 8.6. Is that what I'm seeing up there? Just centralization.
Just centralization. There are some other wastewater projects that are amongst the big list also. This is focused on the centralization projects.
And there's another $5 million in page 20.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was kind of talking about, is that tally. So you have spread the cost out, but the actual impact on the 18 budget is the same?
The, so, no, the cost in wastewater has been spread out, that's why it's $13 million.
So what's the rejection from FY '18?
Just in F '18. We were looking at the plan as a whole, it's $22 million.
I was specifically talking about what could be done.
The projects that were moved out were not in '18. They were in the '19, you know, in the future years.
Okay. That doesn't help, right, for '18?
As far as lowering the overall capital?
No.
Correct.
Okay. And Mark, it's correct that our challenge has been the five-year window, not distinctly '18.
But the discussion right now is specifically for '18, and I, I was talking about other ways to reduce the $70 million of planned projects in '18.
No, the centralization changes that we worked with Craig and Public Works on were to reduce that needed fee increase over the next five years.
Which is a great thing, and I'm glad you did it.
Which were those projects from '19 to '22 that were moved out. They weren't in the current year. Those projects are part of the current centralization project that's already at WFA.
Okay. Beyond the centralization, with the $5 or $6 million of other water, wastewater, or wastewater specifically, are there other projects that could be pushed down, out further?
From the five-year?
From off of next year.
Just off of each?
Yeah. Let's just concentrate with this, yeah, that's, and more than just you, Craig, I mean, with everybody, if we think we can deliver on 75% of the projects, can we get to a 75% number?
On the utility side here, as I mentioned earlier, everything from Project 120 down to 137 are either under construction, out to bid, well into design, and are scheduled to move forward. The, let's see, Project 140 is in design, or is starting design. That's, that's why there's 470. The model update is in process from this year moving forward. 142 is starting this year, which is the 350 construction, or I'm sorry, design, operation building expansion, and we're getting to some other lower-funded projects. But everything on that page, short of two or three projects, are well on their way to spending and completing.
Is there a second page?
Nope. Yeah, these are some of the smaller items dollar-wise, still very important, like the permanent inspection software is only $90,000, but it's a key element in keeping our system working. And then as we get into 155 down to 171, those are future-year projects.
So on the utility side, it's fairly obvious, based on what you're saying, that based on where these things are in the hopper and the need, there's not a lot of wiggle room. Is that a fair?
Yes, that is correct.
I know, I'm going to keep using it because I like it, but. So let's flip over to streets, because that's, I'm trying to get to a conclusion. Yes, thank you for that.
Thanks, Craig.
Yeah.
All right. Just reorienting myself, because some of the other slides were just large dollars to small, this one's, it's in priority order. Thank you. Project number one there, we know where that is. Number two is bidding today. Number three is going out to bid next month. Number four is scheduled for the 27th for consideration by the council. Project five is 100% design, going out to bid in a month or two. Number six is, yes.
The Rosser, sorry, Mayor. Like a football game here. The Rosser Street pavement reconstruction Phase IV.
Correct.
Explain to me what Phase IV is.
That's a project named that's been around for several years. There were three other elements, or portions or segments of Rosser Street that have been reconstructed over the past several years. This is the last segment from essentially the top of the hill where the traffic calming devices are, down to the school. The name of the street escapes me right now. But it's that middle segment that is the last piece of the roadway for the reconstruction.
So you have in there taking the traffic calmer's out.
There is.
No smiling allowed.
I'm sorry. There's, I believe there's one of the elements that are, is being removed out of the collection of traffic calming devices due to a, the history of...
Blown tires. I'm not a fan of these things.
I...
And I just got to say, because it's the only time I get an opportunity in the budget process, we spend a bunch of money for a lost cause. Rosser Street was designed to move people, not to slow people.
Robinson, the plan should be finished late fall and ready to go to construction. Pavement preservation should be going out to bid next month. Sidewalk, same thing, later this fall. Unpaved streets, we work with our streets division to address the handful of unpaved streets that we have and trying to keep them functional. Vehicle replacements. East Goodwin, we just had another meeting earlier this week, and that should be, the plan should be completed spring and ready for construction next fiscal year. So as you can see, a lot of these high-dollar projects, high-priority projects are well on their way. Overland Bridge is an ADOT project that we're co-sponsoring, and it's a small amount of dollars that we're looking at. I believe it's 60% plans on that. So we're moving forward to deliver projects.
Steve, Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Steve, you know, we've talked a little bit about Shimmer, and I want you to tell me what we're getting for the $55,000 that's, that's in here. But Smoke Tree, you know, Billy has talked about Smoke Tree, and I got to tell you, when I'm driving Smoke Tree on East Smoke Tree, I feel like I'm driving in Tucson. And that's, that's not a pretty picture.
Right.
Why isn't Smoke Tree higher on this list, just from a pavement reconstruction situation?
In terms of dollars, we, that's another part of the priorities when you have a finite amount of funding. We had several projects that were needed, identified as being needed, that had started design, and we're moving those through. We've had public meetings, we've identified that this project is in process, so we felt that those projects should continue and get to a project of completion. The Smoke Tree East, we just finished the west half of the Smoke Tree, this is the remainder part. Again, high volume, the pavement surface, we all know, don't need to go any further than that. But the utility side should be fairly good. We have probably a few drainage issues to work through, but repairing the roadway is a, I think it was a six, where is it? Just over $6 million.
4.4.
4.4? Okay. Maybe on the second.
Steve, can you talk a little bit about the Carlton Street, Alarkin Street pavement reconstruction?
Yes.
Is that, how far along are we with things with that? Is that something that could be pushed out a fiscal year to?
I, again, the design is, that's one of our in-house design projects that Mr. Andrews is working on. We're well into design on that. Construction, if need be, could move out.
If I may, so Mr. Lamar, the answer is, talk, Mr. Andrews nodding, potentially, yes, but that project is triggered because of flooding issue. Just so you realize, can you push it back a year or two for your discretion? The answer would be yes. The flooding issues will continue to be. And hopefully, we'd give the opportunity to talk about Shimmer and present you with the options we have, so you can give us direction, where to go from today.
And Henry, while you're up, the projects 27 through 29, where there doesn't appear to, it seems like a one-and-done.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, those are at the bottom of your priority list. Could they be pushed out as well?
The, if you remember, actually, 27 Willis Cortez intersection, we went out to bid because there was a need for it. For variety of reasons, we did not pursue, the bids were all rejected. And our plan was to bring this back after the activities in downtown probably have ended around September-ish. So that's the plan. Can we push it? We can, but just realize there are always questions and minuses.
Sure. And it's not push it just for the dollar amount, it's push it for the capacity within Public Works to actually deliver. And if we think we can deliver on 75% of projects, if staff's focus wasn't spread so thin, potentially, maybe we could deliver on a higher percentage. That would be the argument. I don't know if that's valid or not, but that's the idea.
Right. On the Willis Cortez project, it's really driven by the water line. There was a failure there of the water line a couple of years ago. There's some other issues that need to be addressed with the water line. It's bid-ready. It's in the works to go out to bid on the 20s, around the 26th or 27th of this month. So it's, it's a needed project. The Damarin and Home Street reconstruction is a follow-up with our Small Water Means project. Those, again, are addressing the pavement condition and some drainage issues that are out there. That project is, we're trying to get that design to be completed, to be built immediately following our Small Water Means project that's out to bid and bidding on the 29th. And then the La Rue Cortez drainage project is a project that's essentially designed, was designed privately, and we're able to just get to construction on that, and that also is linked to some other CDBG-funded projects that is a precursor for that. So those three projects, I would say, are 100% for this coming fiscal year.
And if I may add to that, really, as a staff, we are neutral, we don't have any personal view one way or another, we just bring you the best information in our professional judgment. But some of the projects that are here, they don't make as much difference to us as a staff to do it this year or next year. But these are the projects that I'm told, we, the city, all of us, have kind of committed to people for the last six, seven, eight, nine years to do it. Hasn't been done, but still there. It just really is more politics, I think, than engineering, honestly.
Okay. Can you get me back to my...
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I just have one quick statement to that. And then Willis Cortez, because I was down there and watched what happened, and that's a public safety issue to me. So when you start talking about that high volume of water, that water has a function of all the businesses that are down all those streets. And if we have a failure and put those people out of business again, that's irresponsible as far as I'm concerned. And I think that what you're trying to do is prioritize those things in a level to get them done. As Lamerson would say, it's about public safety first. So I'd say that's definitely an issue.
And our water system is high on our public safety list.
Mayor Protiem.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Blair. Here again, the flooding issue on Alarkin and...
Carlton.
Carlton. It's a public safety issue. It's not just something that we don't like. I mean, it comes into play when you talk about the volume of traffic that is impacted with that kind of a situation. So I'm not in support of pushing it backwards, I'm in favor of moving it forward.
Right.
Let's get it done.
And the combination of both the Alarkin-Carlton project and the East Goodwin project are addressing the drainage issues that we're having upstream, which will have a huge effect on the businesses along Whiskey Row, the Goodwin Corridor, and the Carlton Corridor. So it's, we're working from uphill downhill, essentially. Are there any other questions about the centralization projects and the, how we've moved that out to fit within the five-year window? If that's, meets your good, we can go back to the Shimmer project that was a high, discussed last time as, you know, how can we move that one up? We wanted to kind of give you a brief briefing on what the Shimmer project included and why we're doing it. One, we know the pavement surface is less than stellar. We know there's some drainage issues that need to be addressed. There's some roadway geometry issues that need to be addressed at some of the driveways and intersections along that corridor. And there's some pedestrian safety where we would like to incorporate a sidewalk as best we can. So that's what the project, that's what we get with the project as it's currently designed. We also know that there's limitations on funding. So we took a look, based on the conversation we had last time, and I looked at what, what options do we have? Is there anything? So we looked at Shimmer Drive, which is about a $2 million construction value, and said... So we looked at Shimmer Drive, which is about a $2 million construction value, and said, is there a project that's funded that we could switch? We identified two projects that could, with your direction, you know, move around and adjust priorities in how we deliver them. The first one is the Rossiter Street segment that we talked about, phase four, which is about 2.6 million in dollars. If we swap those two projects, we're, that's one option. The other project is a North Washington Street and Churchill, which is mostly a pavement project. There is some drainage improvements on North Washington that we're incorporating in that area, because there's another drainage issue area. Again, that's another project that could swap. However, if we did swap for the North Washington project, we would have to swap another project out because we're half million dollars off short. So that has other ramifications. So we said, maybe it's not best to switch projects, let's keep those moving, because both those projects are about 90% or higher in design completions. In other words, it's almost ready to go out to bid shortly. What if we did a minor repair to Shimmer, basically improving the driving surface? That's it, not addressing some of these other issues that we know we need to do, and we will do at, at the right time. But can we get maybe up to five years of better surface? And that would include milling out the existing asphalt, putting new asphalt down, cleaning up the speed humps so they're more visible, and using a portion, small portion of our pavement rehabilitation budget for that to keep it moving, so there's no budget impact overall, so we can keep these other projects moving that we've already moved down the road. But we wanted to give you a couple of options to, you know, give us direction on. Like Mr. Hash said, we can do whatever you guys would like, but we're just giving you some options to, for guidance.
I think option two is, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, Councilman Blair, ahead of you.
I'll support two.
I support two also. Okay. Go ahead.
Me too.
Me too.
Steve, is it, from a technical perspective, is a mill and repave practical for something like Smoke Tree?
There's underlying issues that we, obviously, we could do something like that, but there's bigger subgrade issues. And reason why there's, the ground has subsided around all the manholes and those issues. It's something we could explore possibly with a little more effort in design this year or evaluation, that maybe we come back for FY '19 with a mill-pave option for that. But we just need to look at it a little closer. We've been looking at Smoke, Shimmer for a while. It's at 30% design, which is an early design. But it's something that we could explore for, again, there's underlying issues that we need to address. That's why we have the reconstruction project. It's not that we're going to fix Shimmer with this option two. It's going to give us some time to let the funding catch up.
So do I have consensus to go with option two?
No.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Got your answer.
Okay.
Councilman Orr.
Yes, on Smoke Tree, you did improve somewhat one of the manholes. I mean, literally, people dodge these things because they're like this high, and they're all the way down the street. So, but you were able to do some things to improve that one. And could you, like Michael say, maybe look at doing something for the others, and then maybe doing, I mean, six years is, this will be a total disaster.
Yeah.
And it's a highly traveled street.
Yes, it is.
Councilman Orr, we agree. We have done, and let me just go back to what Mr. Lamont brought up. Very good option. There are possibilities. So we would like to take a second look at it, see if in fact, with some other work, mill and pave would be an option. If that would be an option, that would reduce the cost quite a bit, making it a bit easier to bring it up, or perhaps to switch it with one of the projects. Even though, as we stated at the last meeting, Shimmer, of course, we have direction from you now. If we wanted to not do anything with Shimmer, are the street division ready to go ahead and do work to don't leave it the condition it is? The same with the Smoke Tree. We do realize that a lot of manholes, they were sunken, and they continue to sink. They're pretty consistent, for sure. But between our utilities and the street division, they work great together, and they're there, and we will go there, and we perhaps will do something minor to bring improvements. We are not going to leave it there for six years, I can assure you that.
True. One of my concerns is, you know, I talked to some people on Washington that, I guess about two and a half years ago, we indicated we're going to start design on Washington Street.
Correct.
I was just looking on here, it's not even planned out in, in the next five years. I think we need to be very careful about, again, giving people expectations that we're going to do something, and then we, we don't do anything for five or seven or eight or 10 years. I think that's unconscionable, to give that kind of expectation to the, to the public that we're going to do something on the street, and then we don't do anything. So I think we need to be very careful about that. And the other thing I'm hearing a lot about is, probably in the last year, year and a half, I've heard a lot of people talk about increased traffic density around town, particularly on major connectors and corridors. So I think, I think you and I have talked about it, city manager, about maybe putting together a committee to start looking at how we can improve.
Mr. Mayor, we've actually had a couple of meetings as an internal working group, just to get some ideas going. I think Billy attended the first meeting, and I attended the second meeting. And we're looking at areas where congestion has really become problematic, and what are some of the remedies for it. So we've already started that.
So again, I kind of go along with some of the other comments here that we have to look not only at, you know, just reconstruction, because it's time and the waterworks that go along with it, you know, water and wastewater. But also, I think we got to start really looking at density, because I'd say in the last six months, I've been getting many more complaints about traffic density.
All right. I'm done with our presentation, unless there's any more questions that you have.
Any more questions, comments?
I have just one comment, because we're going to. I have had questions about congestion also. But from my observation, being here as long as I have, it has not been because of our growth in the city of Prescott proper. I mean, yes, that attributes to some of it, but it's the growth of everybody around us, the growth of our tourism, growth of every function we have, the growth of PV, the growth of, of the county. I mean, they're all coming in every morning and leaving every night. I mean, do we put the gate up and say park outside? No.
But it's still density.
Yeah.
So we got to deal with it.
Yeah, I agree with the density, but I also think, and for Henry's department, there's a lot of things in downtown that I believe can be remedied by turn arrows and different functions of the road system. And we don't analyze that often enough. And I think those all need to be reanalyzed. There's not enough left-hand turn signals, they're not on long enough, causes traffic to back up, and I think that's a huge problem. And I think it needs to be looked at, at a very extensive study of that density volume with the lights downtown, and whether they're tied together, how that works, and whether it's the crosswalks that need to be changed. There's a lot of things that can be looked at, and I, I just think we need to do a better job.
That is part of what we're looking at when we're looking at the downtown, is we're looking at the operational effects, increasing parking, making the sidewalks shorter, so there's less pedestrian time that's needed for the signals to allocate for that to keep vehicle traffic moving. We're looking at those as we do these projects downtown as well.
Councilman Blair, that's also a great topic for this traffic slash congestion working group to look at, too.
I mean, I don't want to get specific, but I drive down there all the time, and a left-hand turn arrow on Carlton would be good, and a left-hand turn on Willis would be good, and some different things that you could use going east, west, north, south make, make huge differences. And, and again, like Willow Creek Road, we have talked about that ad nauseam before we had that second light put in at Tractor Supply, that that light would be tied into Sandretto and Commerce. If you go out there and drive, you got a traffic nightmare, because those lights, those traffic lights are not synchronized. The lights that are synchronized on Black Drive, and also there at the entrance to the, to the plaza, both of those are synchronized the same way, and they move traffic a whole lot better. So I think we have some problems out there with our synchronization, I think, need to be looked at.
Thank you for that input. We'll talk to our traffic engineer and make sure that's working.
Yeah. Steve?
Henry?
Thank you, sir. We agree, I think it's a good point. Maybe once in a while, if it's okay with council, we will actually start a comprehensive study and looking into the traffic system we have, starting in downtown Gower, and perhaps come to you with a presentation and our finding, if that's okay. That will probably would take a few months, but it's a good time, good idea to do that.
Yeah, Steve, let me ask you this, and this is a traffic situation. One of the reasons why things back up on Montezuma Street is because of pedestrian traffic. You know, basically, you can't turn right. I mean, there's a whole bunch of things that go into that, particularly when you get toward the weekends. I've seen certain communities that have diagonal crosswalks. Is that something that we've ever considered? And is that something that a traffic engineer would look at and say, oh, you're going to create a worse problem? Or it would actually help people get to where they're going without having to make two stops?
Right. That is something that is a tool in the toolbox for traffic flow management through intersections. We have to look at the distance someone travels diagonally, is much farther than a short crossing. Sometimes there's a pedestrian all-walk phase where all the pedestrians walk all four streets at the same time, no vehicles go through the intersection, so then it's, pedestrians are stopped, and the vehicles have the next phase. There's a lot of different options, and our traffic engineering group does look at those, and we do evaluate that as we do a Goodwin project, a Carlton-Alarkin project, which we're making some modifications to the existing traffic flows at those, with those projects. So it is something that we do look at, and that will have, like Mr. Hash mentioned, that will be part of this evaluation that we're, we can do, and see if there's, how creative can we get to address this? Because I've experienced the same thing, you're just waiting for that one through lane to move, and there's just people walking across, which is great, because they're walking, and they're downtown. But trying to drive through it causes other issues.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, this meeting's adjourned. We'll start up again in five minutes with our next meeting.